October 28th, 2019 in Douglas, Georgia, Conover County. George Foster Ryan at City Hall. And I'm here on the half of people who'd like to know. I'm here on City Hall, on the half of people. And we're not going to report.
How you doing?
Honey and friends.
Alright.
Thank you, sir. You too, sir. Thank you, Senator.
How you doing, Steve? How y'all doing?
Good.
Alright, alright.
Excuse me, good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? We're about getting ready to start our work session. If you would, do me a favor. If physically, check your phone to make sure it's on silent or vibrate. There's no way my mom should call me. I've been with her the majority of the day. We're all good. Has anyone seen Commissioner Pearson? Anyone seen Commissioner Pearson? Okay. Mickey Mouse' little hand is on six and his big hand is on twelve. That means it's eighteen hundred. Are we ready? You ready, Mayor Prochey?
Yes.
Mr. Dern? Mr. Taylor? Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Moore? Alright. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner. This will serve as our work session for this October 28th, 2019. And as always, our city manager, the pride of West Green, Mr. Charlie "Go" Davis, will lead us through it.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item on the agenda is to review the October 14th amendment.
I have read over those, Mayor, and I'd like to look at what's on the agenda.
Mr. Moore?
I agree.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Mr. Mayor Prochey?
Consent.
Item two, discuss the fee waiver request for the Veterans Family Worship Center for the C.E. Worship Center of Stevie Young.
Mr. Moore, how you doing? All is well, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just coming here, I kind of choke, but once again, once again requesting the waiver fees for the use of a one-off facility. This will be for the Veterans Family Worship Center. I guess for the annual community-wide Thanksgiving dinner. Questions are using on November the ninth and tenth. Certainly do not oppose anything like that as serving our community. And I would certainly recommend, are we gonna have those added cost regards for administrative fees?
Mr. Dern?
I'm in agreement for that.
Consent?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor Prochey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent for the administrative fees.
Mr. Moore?
Consent.
Great. Great, thank you.
Item three...
I got a question, but we get... Do they have this annually every year?
Right.
Is this one of those activities we can add to the calendar?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
The dates fluctuate.
But it won't... But can I just answer that question of, yes, sir, I can add it, but I would like some direction from the Mayor Commission? Are we gonna add this? Every organization may have something. Are we gonna think of like Department of Labor, or 501(c) organizations? So, I mean, Stevie Young can have something and he won't be free. But I add whatever, but I would like for this kind of narrative, this of annual events that we can add. I could have a fifty events that's coming, could be just a rubber stamp, so, but I will add. That's what we want to put on.
Now, the reason why I ask, the reason why I ask is because with this come before us every year since I've been in the Commission. And we agreed to it, so that's why I was...
Yes, sir. Great point, but I just...
So I'm saying like the stuff that we agreed to every year, that we have a consensus on, could we just, even if it's fifty, just draw to the head which ones we want to put on?
Yes, sir. Okay, so...
May I make a recommendation here would be that as long as they don't abuse the privilege in any way, you know, if we go ahead and put them on there without regard to discussion, Stevie, I think it is with your discretion some way that we're assuming these people will use it, you know, saying as good stewards of that. The only time I'd have a problem with it would be if after the fact something. You see what I'm saying, guys? Potentially we need to discuss that, but you could bring that to our attention.
Yes, ma'am.
We're good? We're good?
Okay.
Still on consent. Mr. Davis?
Item three, discuss budget of vehicle purchases for multiple departments, if we like, utilities, records.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
I hope y'all had a chance to look at the background of this, this vehicle purchases. Kind of helped Stanley break this down by the visions, so y'all could see what truck was replacing what, where that truck was going, the gov deals, whatever. Meat and potatoes of this. Grand total purchase price of all these trucks is $220,360.55. Six of these trucks are coming out of enterprise funds, which is water, silver, and electric. The other truck is coming out of Parks and Recreation, which Stevie, if we need to, can speak to it. But all these will be on the state contract. Mr. Merrick did that. Advertise was properly done. He has attached all of these bid out documents that y'all can see for the gov deals stuff. So we'll be asking you guys not to approve those seven vehicle purchases as the Mount mentioned.
Mr. Moore?
I agree with, of course, we've already agreed with the budget, Mayor and the budget.
They are all budget purchases.
For repetition.
Correct. Consent. Ms. McNeil?
Yes, consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
I both.
Both?
Consent.
Alright, we have to take that before.
Next is item four, tab C, discuss purchase of one new LED sign by Mike Hudson.
There again, we're going out to bid on a flashing sign. I know you guys are aware, we have the three of the entryway signs installed here in Douglas. One on the north end, one on the east and west, and thirty-two. This sign would be put on the, which is now the Circle K, used to be Flash Foods, will be put on the Circle K again. This sign will be used mainly for city functions and events. The way I read the background, there was a tag relation sheet that Mr. Merrick had prepared. Low bidder was United Signs out of Norcross, Georgia, for a total of $15,390. So that's what would be, would be asked the Mayor Commission to approve tonight is the purchase of this LED sign, to see how this works out. And we would eventually put these at every sign location, if this is something y'all would like to see in the future.
Sounds good. Mayor Prochey?
Sounds good to me.
Consent?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dern?
I both.
Both? Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Consent.
We have to take that before, not Uniteds.
Thank you, I do. Thank you.
Next item is to discuss, item five, discuss the Boys and Girls Club lease renewal. As you know, I got Bull here tonight, if y'all need to ask him any question. What? When they go to sleep, they call him a Bull dozer. Anyway, oh, oh, you know, the old, I used to call it a big grocery store, whatever the building is down there on Jackson Street, and the Boys and Girls Club there, has five-year leases on it. Our current five-year lease has probably expired a little bit, and so we're here tonight to, and we also have a sublease in there, but we subleased inside that building to the school board, the Twenty-First Century Program, and board runs both sides of those programs. So we're here tonight to ask y'all to renew the five-year contract and the sub contract to the school board.
Cool. I think that should be all right. Consent? Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Dern?
Consent.
Mr. Mayor Prochey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir, consent.
Consent.
Consent. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here and for the work that you're doing over there.
Thank y'all.
The next item, item six, have he discussed the date change upcoming meeting. Our next meeting's on November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. So we have either option that Tuesday or that Thursday. We're kind of recommending that Thursday, because Tuesday we have a Fireman's Dinner at the Worship Center. Some of y'all will be attending that, so if y'all want to attend, what's it called, Casey, the Haz...
It's the Annual Hazmat...
Annual Hazmat Dinner. So if y'all want to attend that, we can have a Commission meeting and a Hazmat Dinner. Our recommendation would be that Thursday night, the fourteenth, but y'all call whatever y'all want.
Fourteenth. Anybody have a problem with the fourteenth?
Mr. Moore will be in town, I got it.
Yeah? Mr. Taylor?
We're good.
I'm great, but I'm gonna be in town anyway.
Mr. Mayor Prochey?
That's fine with me, Mayor.
Okay.
Thursday to fourteenth.
Does that require any action?
Yeah, it does, it needs to be a little change.
Cool. Got it.
Everybody can send. Next item, item seven, discuss Hurricane Avenue Road rebuilding project. Commissioner Pearson asked for us to please discuss our agenda for some further discussion. I don't know exactly what the intended, the agenda item was, but just from a staff standpoint, here, last Commission meeting we had, when this item came up, we discussed that we would try to work this into our upcoming budget, which we'll go into working on budgets in January and February upcoming year. And so it should be in the next year's budget for y'all's consideration around that April timeframe.
Correct. Also, collaboration with the town. Correct. Anybody have any questions pertaining to this?
No, sir.
Uh, we'll get it done.
Okay. We're good. No action required. Next?
I would like to say something.
Yes, go ahead.
Along with that, while we're talking about next year budget, I have gotten with the city manager and talked with him about a section over on Sears Street, and Lea Street, that needs to upgrade as far as the way the traffic is flowing there. And we can talk about it on a later date, but I do like to see that put into next year budget, too, and everything. I have talked with everybody, if you can, discuss that at a later date, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next item, the item eight, general comments. Tonight, we have three people up here for you tonight. The first one will be American Legion Post 515, Jerome Loving.
Mr. Love? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Commission, everybody. Clock's on me. I love it. Ladies and gentlemen, I come to you on behalf of my post commander, and I have information I want to tell you and hope you come. I gave each of you a postcard, both sides of the country, please, as an information on both sides of it. Love to see you come. I want to announce that on November eleventh, at Conover High School, there are the Veterans Day programs, nine o'clock in the morning. Love to see those kids put on a show. Get from twelve to two at the Worship Center, American Legion Post 515, and Tender Care is providing meals for all veterans and their guests from twelve to two. Come once again and enjoy the meal. On November seventeenth, veterans, listen up. There are the gentleman coming from Washington DC of President Trump's staff at the VA. He responsible for holidaying all your medical records. You can come talk about laws, rules, changes, and ask questions, and answer questions, really. Come, look, see, and get some information. That's on the nineteenth. But on the seventeenth, we're going to Dublin VA, take comfort items, be the veteran, hopefully put on a show, and play bingo with them. You're welcome to come to all of those. Not a big one, brief across America. Love to have you come join us, provide funds. We got seventy-four cemeteries and over twenty-seven hundred veterans this year, and we're counting. Some of you may have veterans, deceased veterans out there, fifteen dollar reef, you can do it. You cast it on, please, we need your help. And if you look at the list of other events, we're going to be attending other Veterans Day programs throughout the Veterans Day time. Come join those kids and watch what's put on the show. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next person appearing before you tonight would be Larry Neesmith, sixty-four Tinsley Street.
Douglas, Georgia.
Douglas, Georgia. Mr. Ray Crowe.
Hello, Mr. Ray. Good afternoon, everyone.
Evening.
Then I wanted to discuss with you a little bit, what I said, two things. First is gonna be, once again, hurricane season will be over on November the third. As of right now, Douglas, Georgia still have the talking shelter in the state of Georgia. I thank all of you for what you do, live there. But with changes happening in Red Cross, I need volunteers. And I need volunteers from Douglas, Conover County. This past shelter season, I had to go to the hospital, and therefore we had to bring in people from different states. And they don't run our house like we run our house. But what Red Cross is asking me to do is to get local volunteers to sign up. You don't necessarily have to do everything we do at Red Cross, but to really operate the shelter, I need for you to be certified Red Cross volunteer. I'll be giving out more information to you for those that want to do this. I wish everybody here would do it. But to reach me is (912) 393-4051. My email is neesmith@45@yahoondotcom. The second thing I'm asked for, to get consent to get on a regular meeting, is with helping hand bikers, we're gonna be presenting some words to different charities tonight. And we just want to do that to let the people know that what we do on the bike organization here in our community, that we do give bikes locally to our charities, and that's pretty much all that.
Anybody have any problems with him? Everybody's good? Everybody's good? We'll carry that poll. Also, we'll give Mr. Loving opportunity to announce that. Next.
The next person that's about to be on here is Mr. Bobby Worthy, Blackshear, Georgia. He's not here, sir.
Not here? No updates?
The updates, and they're just, you know, at the DCA Awards, we had several events. We were awarded the Rules Zone application, the CDVG for the Hollywood area, we were awarded that. And then the last one here was Plan First Community, we received a renewal on it. So with CDVG, the Plan First, and the Rules Zone designation, all that helps when we go to apply for CDVGs and other loans, of course, and businesses and stuff, that'll help out there. That's it, sir.
Good. There's nothing else for us. Do it under the lights in forty-five.
Hey, everybody. Robert Preston Jr. here with DouglasNow.com. Sitting out here in my vehicle. The work session here at City Hall has ended. A lot of you were watching that a few minutes ago, and kind of want to summarize a little bit about what went on, maybe more importantly, what didn't go on. Everybody was expecting a rather spirited work session, but that didn't happen. The reason why everybody was expecting some fireworks is because Bobby Worthy has been in town today, and he's been down in the elections office, been doing some things down there. And also, he was on the agenda to speak tonight at the, at the work session. And those of you who know Bobby Worthy and know his shtick and kind of what he does, will know why that's a big deal. If you don't, then go look him up, you can find him online. You can find him on YouTube and several other places. He's from Blackshear, I believe. And he is a self-styled community activist, and he and Commissioner Pearson are good friends. He's been over here with her doing some things off and on for the last couple of years. He did not show up, and also Ms. Pearson was not in the work session either. She showed up right as the work session ended. And it ended at about fifteen after six. So it's been over about twenty-five minutes now, and almost as soon as the meeting ended, she walked in. And so far, we have not seen Mr. Worthy. It's gonna be interesting to see if he shows up during the regular meeting. If he does, he, the Mayor and Commission do not have to let him speak. That is up to the discretion of the Mayor. Talked to a couple of folks after the work session ended, and the Mayor runs the meeting, and it's up to him whether or not he will allow Mr. Worthy to speak. And I don't know, I have not talked to the Mayor, I don't know what he's inclined to do. Immediately after the work session ended, he and the city manager went into the Mayor's office, and they've had the door shut talking. They may be out now, obviously I'm not inside, but when I came out here, they were still behind closed doors. So I don't really know what the outcome of that will be. If they don't allow him to speak, it's gonna be a pretty short meeting. The, you know, the consent agenda items won't take very long. The other items that they're bringing forward that are not on the consent agenda won't take long, and they'll pass. I do believe they will, anyway. So I don't anticipate a very long meeting. However, the Mayor and Commissioner comments will be in effect tonight. And again, they're supposed to keep those at three minutes each. And if they do, with the seven of them up there, that's a minimum of twenty-one minutes, but most of the time, that three-minute ticker does not really go into effect. Although, tonight, let's see, Jerome Loving from the American Legion spoke at the work session, and so did Larry Neesmith with the American Red Cross. And they had the timer on both of them. So I think there, if they do let people speak, the timer will be on, and there will be three minutes, and the three-minute time limit will be enforced. So if you're expecting a lot of fireworks, I don't know that, that they're gonna happen. And the opportunity for that was in the, in the work session. But we'll see what happens during the Mayor and Commissioner's comments. Joey Meeks is asking, did I miss the work session? Yes, you did. The work session ended somewhere between ten after six and fifteen after six. It didn't take very long at all tonight. It was very routine and benign. So we'll see what happens here. The regular meeting is gonna kick off at seven o'clock, and we'll be back in the meeting room live. And it shouldn't take too terribly long. I know they've got a second reading and a public hearing, they've gotta do one or more, that's, that won't take very long. They'll go with the consent agenda items, that won't take very long. And then they have a couple of items off the consent agenda. One, I remember was, was buying seven cars, I think, that are budgeted items. They've already been approved in the budget. But Commissioner Durham was not in favor of that. So they're gonna talk about that outside of the consent agenda. There was also the purchase of a new LED sign, and they're gonna stick up around one of the city limits, one of the city limit signs. I think it's out on Thirty-two West, but I'm not sure, I was trying to follow what they were talking about, where the location is, but I'm not real sure on that. But Commissioner Durham was not in favor of that either. So they're gonna talk about those two items off of the consent agenda. I believe they're gonna pass. I would guess that they'll pass four to two. Commissioner Durham will not vote in favor of it. Neither will Commissioner Pearson, but the other commissioners probably will, so those items are going to pass, I do believe. Outside of that, we'll see what happens during the Mayor and Commissioner comments. If there's gonna be any controversy, it'll be there, or if they, if Mr. Worthy shows up and they do allow him to speak. And again, we don't know that he's gonna show up, haven't seen him yet. And if he does show up, there's no guarantee that they'll let him speak. I would think that they probably would. They typically do let people speak. That's one thing this Mayor and Commission is good about doing, is letting people be heard, even though a couple of our commissioners don't think so. But they are good about letting people be heard. So I don't know, we'll see. We'll see what happens, or a couple of cars pulling up. I don't see Mr. Worthy in any of those. And we'll just, we'll see if he shows up and see if anything happens. But it's not gonna take very long to get through most of this agenda. I would say probably by seven fifteen or so, seven-twenty. The business ought to be taken care of, then we'll roll into the Mayor and Commissioners comments, and we'll see how long that takes. If it takes one minute, it's one minute too long. I do not like the Mayor and Commissioners comments, for anybody. I don't like anybody speaking in those. I think once the business of the Commission is done, you adjourn the meeting, and you go home. This department heads, this city employee, you've been working all day long, and then they're having to come up here and sit at a meeting. So I think you need to, you need to get the meeting done. And as soon as it's done, you adjourn and go about your business. But again, I don't have, I don't have any say-so in that. It's just my opinion. So that's where we are with the, with the, with the Commission. No fireworks during the work session. Still a potential for a few during the regular meeting. We'll see what happens. So y'all stay tuned, we're gonna take a break. Probably put my charger back on the phone for a few minutes, and then we'll see what happens here. Again, we're gonna go live at seven o'clock. Maybe it won't take long. But we'll be here for the duration, one way or the other. We'll see you again in a few minutes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Here we go. All hearts and minds clear? Good evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner. This will serve as our regular meeting for this October 28th, 2019. The next thing on the agenda would be the invocation. Commissioner Sidney McNeil will do the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to present tonight Brother Willie Carter, who is the senior pastor at the Move God Deliverance Center on Twenty-four Pine Chris Drive. Brother Carter will ask you to please give us the invocation. And thank you for joining us.
Let us bow here. Isaiah forty-one and ten says, "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with my righteous hand." Father, we thank you today, God, that you are who you say you are. And oh, God, we ask now that you would cover each one of us. God, that you would open our ears and eyes of understanding. Give us the courage, God, to be able to accomplish every assignment, God, that you have placed before us. Oh, God, let us be able to agree to disagree. Let us be able, God, to still stand shoulder to shoulder, and do the work, God, that you have purpose for each one of us to do. God, now I pray for you to bless this city. Bless the people of this city. Cause them, God, to go out and run like never before, that they may be able to do something that has not been done before. Bless our youth in this city. Oh, now, God, we thank you, because we believe you for your word, that all things are working together for the good of them that love you. And we love you tonight, God. I pray now that you bless each person in this building. Cover them in the name of Jesus. God, this is your servant's prayer. Let every heart say amen?
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. As always, we stand, we face the flag. Conover County David Junior, all of whom... County County David Junior O L T C will lead us in uh pledge. Lieutenant Junior Graves Moreno will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda. The motion is second for the discussion. All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda will be the second reading and public hearing of the GMA Small Cell Ordinance and C G Model Electric Pole Attachment Ordinance. As always, we will turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Jerome Adams. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Two ordinance for your consideration tonight, and this will be the second reading. Both these ordinance have their very length, so I'll read the reading version. The first one is wireless facilities and antenna code ordinance. And it authorizes the city of Douglas to establish reasonable regulations for the installation, construction, maintenance, renewal, removal, relocation of pipe, main, conduits, cable, wire, pole, dial traffic, and other cities and other equipped facilities, our plans to enter along over and under the public road of the city of Douglas. For other forty-seven USC, two fifty-three C, provided the city has authority to manage the public pipeline from the way. Lively Georgia Streamlining Wireless Facilities, Antennas Act, C P D thirty-six, chapter sixty-six C. Address is placed on small wireless facilities and public right-of-way of local governments throughout the state of Georgia. The second ordinance is the electrical pole attachment code ordinance, and it authorizes the city to prescribe, revise, collect rate fees, toll, and charge for the service facilities or commodities furnished or made available by such undertaking included without limitation as herein after defined electrical facilities. Now, that's the second reading of both these ordinances. Now, at most at this time, open a public hearing. If anyone wishes to make a public comment on these proposed ordinances, please come forward and state whatever comment you may have. Fairly, there is no one, Mr. Mayor, and he's ready to write.
Thank you very much. At this time, I entertain a motion. It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor, uh all opposed, motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda items, and as always, we will turn this over to our city manager, and he will tell everyone the items that were placed on the consent agenda. Mr. Davis, how are you doing this morning?
No worries, Mayor.
This evening, I'm sorry.
We have four items coming over on the consent agenda. Uh they're items one, two, five, and six. Item one is approval of October fourteenth minutes. Item two is approval of a fee waiver for the Bethel Family Worship Center uh of the C U Ware Center. Uh item five is approval of boys and girls uh in the sublease uh contract for the Twenty-First uh Century Group uh for the education renewal. And item six is approval of the date change of the November eleventh meeting to move it to Thursday, November fourteenth.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda. Second. It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Next item on our regular agenda is work session items brought forward for discussion. Mr. City Manager?
First item being brought forward is uh item three, uh discuss the vehicle purchases, the budgeted vehicle purchases for the multiple departments, like that, and the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
As discussed in the work session, we are asking for approval for the purchase of seven trucks. Uh I can go to three of those individuals if y'all would like, or we can do this grand total and stuff for you guys, so I'll tell them what y'all prefer.
Mr. Durham?
Okay.
Which which uh departments? Will you reiterate departments?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do that real quick. Uh we got one uh new twenty-twenty F two fifty coming out of the electric department. Uh we got one new twenty-twenty F two fifty coming out of the sewer division. We got one new twenty-twenty F one fifty coming out of Parks and Recs. Uh we got two twenty-twenty F one fifties coming out of the water distribution, one of those water distribution, one of those water pumping and treatment. And then we have one new twenty-twenty F one fifty crew cab that's coming out of the sewer division at the sewer plant. And then we got one new twenty-twenty F three fifty super cab truck that's coming out of the wastewater division, wastewater collections. So six of those trucks coming out of Enterprise Fund, and one coming out of Parks and Recs. Grand total um paid two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, fifty-five cents, and all these were budgeted trucks in in the current budget.
Second.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion?
Uh motion second. I'd like to say something on that. Um I don't know without uh fee helpers that we have with the city, I would like to see more um upkeep of them, because I had an opportunity today to, you know, just go out and look at some of the fee helpers that uh we've been using. Some are old, some are new, and the employees themselves are not keeping them up like they should be. I understand that um it's not their fee helper, but it's the citizens' fee helper, and uh they are not being up kept like they should be up kept, you know, everything. And I would like to see each department here come up with some kind of, you know, um checklist on what we should do to make sure that these fee helpers be kept up like they should be kept up. Like I said, I had opportunities to visit um each department and looked at some of the newer trucks, some of the older trucks, you know, and I think they should be, you know, upkeep of what they are doing.
I saw I got a question. So which departments are you talking about with those, because some of those departments need newer cars? Like some of them I know got old cars, so I mean.
And I gave you guys a list of what we're replacing, what we're passing down. Uh it's a Commissioner Taylor's point. There's some of these nineteen ninety-nine models, two thousand, two thousand and one, and when these vehicles were bought, we did not have stuff in place for checklists. We do now. Um so I think you'll see the newer vehicles are being taken care of better than some of the old ones.
Right.
Kevin does a really good job at E S D. There's a lot of these vehicles that we're buying that will be used by E S D personnel, not the city personnel, so. We'll be and he'll get together and make sure, but they do very in-depth checklist on their vehicles every day, so I think you'll see that get better now.
The reason I say I I had checked some of the old ones out, and I understand they were over there on my own. I would check some of the newer models out, and within the next five years, but they continue with that track that they got now, you know, to be right back here again.
We'll 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 get together and make sure they do.
So you're saying on newer models?
Newer models.
Okay.
Any other comments, Commissioner Durham?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, approach him.
Yes, sir.
All right, here's a motion at the second. All in favor? Uh. All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries.
I oppose as well.
Motion carries. Next item?
May I um I I didn't get have a chance to say it. Uh I had a chance, but I wasn't thinking about doing it, I'm saying during the discussion. But I just wanted to say why I oppose. Uh also, I agree about the upkeep, and that's good that you all are trying to implement a checklist or or have implemented. But I feel that at this time, right now, I cannot, you know, vote to approve this at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um I was hoping that there was some kind of way that we could hold off on doing this and try to make do what we have. However, I did not get any of those departments called out. Um but with the situation that we are in, with um the people at the last meeting who have been complaining about these utility rates, I just cannot justifiably uh vote to spend that amount of money right now until we can find a resolution to help the people who are suffering with the utilities. That's all.
Thank you. Next item on the uh that we brought forward?
Next item will be item four, uh discussing purchase of one LED sign, and invite Hudson.
Uh also discussing the work work session, this sign that we're talking about buying will be on the back side of one of our inch away signs on the north end of town. Uh in the background, you can see that it will be used to advertise mainly for city events, uh not private or public stuff. Uh with that being said, we're asking the mayor and board of commissioners to approve the purchase of one new LED sign to be utilized by the Public Information Division as discussed in tonight's work session meeting from the low bid submitted from United Signs, located in Door Cross, Georgia, for a grand total of fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, and this was also a budgeted item.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I just like that I maintain this uh as I did previous times.
All in favor? Uh. All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the items um from the work session. We have two items to speak, but we'll put it on the under staff comments.
Under staff comments? Good. All right, the next item on the agenda is staff comments.
First, we post five fifteen, Jerome Loving, speak about some of these activities.
Good evening, Mr. Jerome.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, and to all in the citizens of Douglas and California.
Good evening.
On behalf of all commanders, commanders, and members, I want to make sure of some events we're having, and hope you enjoy us on adventure camp. First, uh we're gonna join the Conca School and their Veterans Day Program on November eleventh, nine to eleven A M. Follow that, post five fifteen, and Tennessee Care is gonna host a meal for veterans, all veteran guests at the C U Ware Center from twelve to two P M. Come on out and have a meal and show the veterans you are here. First responder will invite, uh in uniform, come on by, have a meal. Then on November the seventeenth, ten A M to four, we're going to Dublin and take comfort items, have a meal with the veterans, play bingo, and hopefully give some entertainment to them, because some of the veterans, when they're brought there, they're left, and families don't come back to see them, so we're their family. Come join us if you can. Then on November nineteenth, there's a gentleman coming out of the president's staff, that's on the V A. Gonna come down, talk about laws, changes, rules, and some new things, those are just things about the V A. And you'll entertain questions. It'll be a post five fifteen from three thirty to five thirty. Again, veterans, come on out and get some questions answered. And then the big pro uh project, we have a reef across America. We currently have seventy-four cemeteries, you know, twenty-seven hundred veterans that we are putting flags in the reef some. Of course, on December the seventh, placing our flags, and the insurance after that, we'll place a reef. Don't know when they're coming, but come on out and join us and help us help us do that. Uh our program is December the fourteenth at the C U Ware Center from twelve to one. Again, come out and join us. Love to help you. Uh our mission to remember, honor, teach. We're gonna remember those veterans that have fought and died for the freedom we have, honor those currently serving their families, and wanna teach our children our young about the freedom they have and the sacrifices they make. All the funds we get come from you. We have fundraisers going, Boston Blood, any contribution, never too early to donate, never too late. Thank you again, and come out and join us if you can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, love.
Thank you, Mr. Love, man.
Helping Hands Bikers will be next, and uh Larry Neesmith.
About four years ago, we got together with the city, and we had the bike barbecue and festival. The bikers participated, and we started participating. At this time, we had formed Helping Hands Bikers LLC. We simply do what we do, because we love to ride motorcycles, and we do charities, and we vote each year for two charities out of our community that we raise money for. This year, we raised money for, we voted for Steel Waters and my brother's Keepers, which is a food bank out in Seven Grace, Memphis. Ms. Joanne Lewis for Houston, Ms. Sherry Smith for Houston.
I'm gonna ask why you think that you stepped up as well as others.
On behalf of the Helping Hands Bikers LLC and our biker community that come together, that we put a rally or a festival on, and usually it's the first weekend in September. This year, we raised two hundred and fifty dollars to go to Steel Waters and two hundred and fifty dollars to go to my brother's Keepers Food Bank.
All right, third sideways.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
Mr. D. Smith, now he's gonna switch hats and Red Cross guy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. Um Red Cross here in Indianapolis is needing help. Um I'm proud to say that when we do have a disaster here in Indianapolis, our shelter for the last four or five years has remained the number one shelter in the state of Georgia. We housed up to nine hundred and sixty-four people, no, sorry, nine hundred and ninety-four people a couple of years ago. This year, we didn't have as many things as other, we did have a vacuum weeks. Right now, we're seeking help from our local volunteers. We need people to come in to help us maintain our shelter, so we don't have other people from different states coming in, running our shelter. If you will, please reach out to me at nine one two three nine three four zero five one. That's again, nine one two three nine three four zero five one. The American Red Cross, we are here for you at any given time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? The uh just the end of the uh staff comments. The next item is the uh mayor and commissioner's comments. Uh I'd like to entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Can I ask a question, propose it, please? Um last meeting on the fourteenth, I think that's the one day we had a meeting. And uh we came with a utility committee. I understand we formed the committee to, you know, to over uh oversee and, you know, anything that comes to a problem, but I also asked, uh what would be the method for the seven to nine days that was added to the bill? And I asked you, Mayor, and um you told me that I could talk to Charlie or whatsoever. So I wanted to know, like, could what what was the agreement for the seven to nine days? Are you gonna put two days on one bill? Are you gonna wipe it away, or what? What discussion?
Mr. Davidson, I talked about it. It was basically uh the citizens, it's a case-by-case basis. They will contact uh Ms. Boulder, sit down and have a conversation with her, and those six to nine days can be spread out from six months to twelve months. Is that correct? So to minimize the impact on the citizens.
Okay, so it will be spread every two, every two?
No, each citizen will come and say, hey, look, these nine days, I wanna pay them off in three months.
Okay.
I wanna pay them off in six months.
Okay, so they have the option to pay it off
Correct.
to twelve months.
Correct.
Okay, so will y'all still blast out to that contingency ward?
We'll do that.
Let them know about that, 'cause some of them are still concerned, and some of them did say that they came, and there was no help to them, so. And so I'm just reiterating and recapping on that.
Thank you.
But I'd like to also ask a question about it. May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you for acknowledging. At the last meeting, it was my understanding that a committee was formed to review each person on the council would appoint one or two people. That was the last discussion.
Everybody has said that. I don't know if the committee has met or what.
You don't know. We're talking about, we were supposed to appoint someone.
That's what I think he he recommended. I don't know if he said that we would. I'm not sure about that.
So I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, being that the citizens came forward with the concern. I don't think that we should just leave it in limbo. I think that the city manager should have got something initiated to finalize what we said. Because we did say each person up here would appoint one to two people. So what's happening with that sound? Is it my mic or what? But I mean, you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Y'all got it going, since that's kind of a political discussion, I mean, y'all going to have to come up with whatever plan y'all want or don't want or whatever. Because I mean, that's y'all's call on that. I mean, that's not a...
I understand, but as city manager or mayor, somebody has to take the initiative to make sure that we do something. If that's, because we did say we would form a committee that we all appoint, one person or two people, whatever. So I think we might be in order to try to get it on the agenda for the next meeting. What procedure, which way we need to move forward.
That sounds good. I can agree with that.
Thank you, thank you. Last thing I have, I want to ask, because you didn't mention it, Mr. City Manager, in the, in the consent agenda. So the Evergreen Avenue Road rebuilding. What was decided upon? I mean, I talked to the mayor when I was walking in. First, since I already began talking, let me first of all, first and foremost. Apologize that I was unable to be here for the work session, to the constituents, to the citizens of Douglas. I've been awake since five o'clock this morning and I've been running all day, so I'm really kind of exhausted right now. So if I don't seem to make my thoughts coherent, please understand that I'm a little tired. But so please accept my apologies. I wasn't here for the work session and I had placed it on the agenda to discuss the Evergreen Avenue Road rebuilding. So if you all had a discussion, I need a recap so I can let my constituents know, in case they don't watch it on TV, exactly where we are with that.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, as discussed in September twenty-third meeting, in the upcoming budget preparation for the FY twenty-one budget. As discussed in that meeting, we would be working in our agenda items to add that project to our FY twenty-one budget. And that starts in the January, February timeframe, budget starts in July.
Right, and I hear y'all, but I remember stating that, being that this is an election year, none of us know who are up for reelection if we would be here. And I wanted us to try to go ahead and get something resolved for those citizens because, you know, one administration is not bound by the other. We can sit here and say, next year, but if four of us that's here now, if we're not here next year. That administration would not be bound or obligated to honor that road being repaired. And it's in terrible shape. And I know the mayor said he was going to get his dad about seeing what the county could do. Because that's also on permission of House.
Yeah, I know the county is looking at it. Their budget year starts in January. They're looking at, because the internal discussion is concerning that. Same way with our budget preparation for the July budget timeframe. And so those conversations are somewhat being handled.
Okay, okay. I just want to make it clear, you know, that, you know, if it's a different administration, they wouldn't be bound by what we're saying we're doing. I just want that to be clear. So once again, I've tried to make sure that that road got repaired like it needs to be. The last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, bear with me. I want to commend post five one five, I want to commend Helping Hands Bikers. I want to commend Red Cross, Mr. Davis Smith, for the good things that you all and your organizations are doing to make our community a better place for the citizens. I really appreciate your hard works because I know it's not easy. I know it's not easy. I want to, lastly, I think, remind everyone that this is the final week, October the twenty-eighth until November the first. It's the final week to go out and vote early. Citizens of Douglas, you need to exercise that right. It is definitely a privilege because some countries don't allow citizens to vote. But I just want to remind you all, if you have not voted, please go out and vote. Try to vote early and avoid the long lines because you might get frustrated and then decide not to. This is the last week for early voting. It ends on this Friday. One last thing that I wanted to say.
Mr. Pierce, you said the one last thing every time. And I'm trying to be patient.
Well, my apologies. How long have I been talking?
It didn't start the time.
Okay, well, I'm about...
So please be brief.
I'm about done. I received this Code Session twenty-one dash two dash four zero nine, assisting electors who cannot read English or who have disabilities. In being out, you know, campaigning, talking to people, this and the other. There are several people who are saying that they're being told that they cannot assist a person who's illiterate or disabled. Because they might be a cousin to one of the candidates. I just wanted to make it clear, since we have members of the Board of Elections here. That according to Code Session twenty-one dash two dash four zero nine, cousins does not apply. So people should not be being told because their cousin is a candidate, they cannot assist someone. And I have a copy of that statute here. So I'd like to share that with the people here from the Board of Elections. But that's the last thing I had to say, Mr. Mayor. Please go for it, people.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
That I violated the city charter by contacting people from the ad hoc committee.
She asked a question if a commissioner does contact individual employees, is that a violation of the charter? And that answer would be yes.
She asked to get that what he's saying because I want to be clear on this. She asked the question, what?
The question is asked, if a commissioner does deal with employees directly that reports to the city manager's office, would that be a violation of city charter? And now obviously that answers yes, because the charter states that. So the thing with dealing with, I guess, the whole thing with the ad hoc committee. Contacting them, is that a violation of charter? So contacting individual members of the ad hoc members would be a violation of...
Not after they made their decision, it would not be, Mr. City Manager.
I mean...
If I had contacted them to try to influence whatever decision they would make, I could see that being a violation. I contacted the one lady after they had voted. So if I contacted her after they had voted, would that be a violation of the city charter?
Contacting them in regards of ad hoc, yes, ma'am, that would be a violation.
After they voted. Why? Tell me why.
Because the day-to-day operation, I mean, not to get into an argument about it, but the charter clearly states...
I want some clarification.
The charter clearly states that any direct conversation with city employees that report, other than, you know, city judge, city attorney, city manager. Any direct employee involvement had to go through the city manager's office, not through those individual employees.
So, Mr. City Manager, you're telling me that all of these people up here, mayor and six commissioners, before they have any contact with these staff, employees, they go to you?
According to the charter.
No, no, no. I'm not asking you about what's according to the charter. I'm asking you specifically, sir. Do they, has everyone up here went through you before they've talked with the staff?
If you're asking over the years, there's been...
No, 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 no. Currently, currently, this year.
Please come here.
This year, this year.
Mr. City Manager.
This year, Charlie.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Because he asked you to come here because he knows that's not how things go.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Plenty elected officials ask staff about various questions. It does not say, if I had told the young lady she was to do a certain thing, that would be a violation of the city charter. I did not tell her. I called her to question and ask, how did it go? What happened? It was already done. It was already done. It was not before it was done. So I don't, did you give the young lady in the paper, the statement that I violated the charter?
The question was asked if...
If, but that's not what she printed. She didn't print if.
So if, if, if you're...
I got you with that. But that's not, that's not what she printed, Mr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. That's not what she printed. She printed, I violated the charter.
Oh, make it look bad.
Mm-hmm. And I wanted to get that out because that was definitely not true. But people, citizens have called me and contacted me, what did you do to violate the city charter? That's why I asked you to stay. And what the police officer, yeah, he said I was stupid. But the chief said he hasn't seen that. So there we are. Thanks.
Commissioner, Commissioner, why, why would you even ask the city manager that question? Why would you really ask him a question like that? I mean, both of you all are professionals, you are elected officials. Why would you ask that?
Good question, Mr. Ryan. Last week's newspaper, Douglas Enterprise, the article, and I meant to bring it in here with me tonight. But as I said, five o'clock this morning, I've been ripping and running to now. So I forgot it. But last week's newspaper of the Douglas Enterprise stated that I violated the city charter by contacting members of the ad hoc committee. I actually contacted one person, Ms. Lorinda, contacted by phone. I happened to see another person of the ad hoc committee in the hallway here at City Hall one day. Their decision had already been made. So I asked the two people that I, one I called, one I saw. And the other person they said I talked to, I did not talk to that third person. But I asked them, how did they come to the conclusion of what they came to? That's what I asked. That was definitely not a violation of the city charter. Because a decision had been made, I had been told that those people at the ad hoc committee did not agree that the city manager had followed due process in terms of allowing the people that got terminated to express what actually happened. That only one side was presented to the city manager and they were terminated.
What newspaper was this?
This is the Douglas Enterprise, the local newspaper. We only...
Okay, well, do you, do you or do you not have an election coming up? And if other people in the community ask you about that, do you think that could have an impact on the turnout, I mean, the vote in the election?
It really should because we should not have staff here at City Hall that's getting paid and not doing their job. And not doing their due diligence. If that young lady, he said she asked the question. That's what he said. So if she asked the question, he should have somewhere went to Douglas Enterprise and said, well, I did not tell you that she violated the charter. You asked a question if they do such and such with that violating charter. He should have clarified that as the city manager. But because I do not want people thinking that I've done something that was wrong, that's why I asked that question.
Okay.
And had the mayor not pressured me tonight to hurry up, that was one of the questions I wanted to ask the city manager and the lady from Douglas.
Commissioner, another question is, does it not state in the charter, I'm becoming, I've gone over forty cities that I deal with over the many years. Dealing with the same problem that you all have here. So my question is, is it stated in the charter that commissioners, people on the commission, should not be interrupted?
It is, that is.
Did I not read that in the charter?
Yes.
Well, why is it that you all who have the power on this commission not say nothing about that? When such a led factions is encountered, and I got confidence in GMA. Because that's where I go, I've gone to their meetings with Gordon, Warrington, Spatter, George, just all around.
Yes, sir.
And they have always over the last, since nineteen, I mean, since twenty-ten, provided good guidance at these meetings.
Yes, sir.
And training. And so why are people here not getting the training that I've seen given by GMA?
Well, I would not say that my fellow colleagues are not getting training. But I've stated, and some of you all have seen before, that sometimes when various commissioners might try or attempt to talk. That sometimes the mayor will do like he did tonight with Mr. Davis and tell the person, don't answer that, like he called Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, come here. He did not want me speaking with Mr. Davis. Because he knew, the mayor knew, I did not violate the city's charter. He didn't want that to come out. As well as Mr. Davis knew, I did not violate the city charter. But you have people like Mr. Preston who's here recording, who's here recording. And then he will go out and tell a whole three hundred and sixty degree turnaround from what's the actual truth. He even stated on his media channel that I violated the charter.
And what is his channel?
Douglas Now News. And he even said that any citizen can file whatever to get me removed or whatever because I violated the charter. It's ridiculous. Well, I might have mis...
I did not say that.
I might have misstated, but you, you referred, you did say I violated the charter. You said that.
But I believe you did.
Now you're saying you believe.
I believe, I believe based on the information that the city manager has given, that yes, there was a violation of the city charter.
It was not because the ad hoc committee had made their decision. I have a right, I have a right to ask any employee anything I want to ask them. The charter gives this mayor and council that authority. We are to be given any information concerning anything within the city of Douglas that we want.
Commissioner.
But when you have people that have sat along and went along with the mayor, knowing he's wrong, to say, don't answer that, or this and that. I tried to get, there was Brandon Paul who was mistreated, fired for no reason. There was the lever guy and Greg Nugent who were mistreated. From what I seem to understand, because we have not been given all the information. We've only been given one side. I'm being told there's more information out there that we don't have. We don't know. But you can't get this mayor and council to vote, to go into an executive session to discuss people who have filed grievances because they feel like and they believe they were treated wrong at the city of Douglas in doing their job.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm so sorry that I'm asking these questions.
No, it's fine.
No, on one hand, I'm sorry that I have to ask these questions because, I'll be honest with you, of all the cities that I've gone to. This is the first time that I've seen wherein people that were elected by the voters do not have sufficient or allow sufficient time to express themselves. And for as much information that I have recorded after the meeting, which is not a part... which is not a part of the minutes.
Right.
Nobody in Coffee County or in the state of Georgia would know anything about it.
Right.
So I, I just have a problem with elected officials voting in office by the voters. Now.
But the people that the voters vote in to represent them are not given adequate time to discuss issues and try to find solutions to the issues.
Right, I find, I, I'm gonna be honest with you. When I first came here, I commended, uh, Douglas because I saw some positive things, but now I see something different. Uh, that's my last statement. And I just wanna, uh, say to the people of Douglas is that we cannot blame the mayor and we should never blame the city manager, in my most humble opinion. We must blame the people who were elected, starting from one down the line. These are the people that voters must blame. Because they should stand up and ensure that you all and, as well as the voters, have a voice under our formal government.
Yes.
And I say that, uh, as a person that tried to be, I may not be, but I try my best to be, uh, as anybody who wanted the best interest of any city. And I've gone across the state, including Madison, Florida. And people criticize me for doing it. But you will not find in most cases on any of my videos that I lie.
Yes, sir.
Because in most cases, it's people like you who are willing to talk.
Yes, sir.
That's who give the voice. All I do is ask the question and I question GMA on their training and I question the newspapers. One other question.
Yes, sir.
This is the only city that I've seen don't have no TV stations ever come to the meetings. Do y'all have a TV station that covers this, this area?
Uh, Albany is the, uh.
Closest one.
Closest, I think. So, uh.
So they only come?
I don't know when they come.
I mean, I mean, there are others.
They only come if it's a murder or, or something violent.
I mean, th, of all the places that I've been, some places they have to come a long ways too. But I have never seen a TV station here except years ago when I came here about, I think it was Neesmith that the,
Yes.
They had a, a noose or something.
Right.
I think that was the one if I got it right.
Yes, that's it.
Now, news media came for that. Other than that, this is strange.
You're right.
It's very strange.
It, it, it is, it is. But let me say this before you close, Mister Ryan. I just want to say to the citizens of Douglas, Georgia, especially those of District Three, Ward Three, regardless of what and how various folk in this city have tried to paint me, I want you all to know that I sit here doing what I believe is right. Because I believe that that's what you all put me here for, is to speak up for what's right. Because as I told the lady this, earlier this morning while I was campaigning, if I sit here and keep my mouth quiet with all the wrong that's going on, I am just as wrong as the rest of them. So I say to y'all, I beg y'all, please, please exercise your right to vote and know that I have truly, truly done my best to speak up for the people and what's right. It hasn't mattered the color of the person, the gender of the person, or whatever. If it was something that I felt was wrong happening and was not right, I spoke up against it. Because I want the city of Douglas to be a better place for all of us, not just certain people.
I thank you for your comments. You, go ahead, my brother.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
This is concerning.
Well, before you finish, hold on a minute. I wanna thank Douglas now for being here recording because this is Freedom of the Press and I appreciate you getting this on tape as well. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Last month or month before last, they made a, somebody made a bad, bad mistake down here with our lights. They added seven, eight, nine days on our bill and everybody's beer shut up. And some people were crying, just like me. What's wrong with having like this? So finally, we find out somebody said, we made a mistake. Okay, my question is, if you made a mistake, then you explain it. Don't put the bag on me.
Right.
Don't put the load on me. If you made a mistake, why make me pay for it?
That's right.
I got a life that's so big, I cannot pay it. But what they'll tell you, we'll give you some time. Give you two or three days a month till you pay all this extra stuff. I don't wanna pay for your mistake. I want it wiped off the book.
Okay, we got you, we got you.
Right.
Uh, Olivia, another thing too.
Yes, sir.
When you readdressed that issue, you, you readdressed that issue. Because I'm sitting here listening, that's in the minutes. Where what they said they was gonna do.
Right.
But thank God you did bring it back and maybe it's back on the agenda. And I, I said to myself, what is this? And I'm not being favoritism.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm giving a reflection
Yes, sir.
of what the minutes
Yes.
should reflect.
Right.
If they are correct.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is Get to Free Press. I'm in Douglas, Georgia. And as I said before, I thank God for our formal government. But it's not the mayor's fault. It's not the city manager's fault. It's the people who sit here after being elected by the people. Because if these people don't stand up, don't say anything is wrong, don't follow what is said, this is where the problems are. And I must say that, the elected officials, they have the power, not the mayor. The mayor, in all the city that I've been to, they chair, they chair the meeting. And I'm, I'm familiar with all forms of government in cities. You have a strong mayorial, uh, type government. And you have a strong council type government. And you also have someplace where the city manager run everything. Y'all have a nice day. May God bless you. Bye-bye, we're gone.
Thank you.
Statement, he said that he would like to see more or better upkeep on the vehicles that the city has. And he, you know, his, his statement was, I don't think employees keep them up very well. Now, that, that's not a direct quote. And I know what he's saying because, you know, I'm in the transportation business as well. And I put people in vehicles they don't own and let them drive them. And a lot of, uh, uh, a lot of times the people who drive my vehicles don't take very good care of them either. So I do understand that. Also, another controversial item tonight was an LED sign, LED sign. I had said, I thought it might be out on the west side of town, but that's not true. It's going to be on the north side there where the Flash Foods, Flash Foods North, which is changing, um, to what Circle K, I think. But, uh, there's a, there's a, a, a brick, an ornate brick, welcome to Douglas sign there like there is on the east side of town, Allen Ward Street. Uh, but where those one, where the one ways come together. Or where they split, I guess depends on which direction you go. But as you come into town, I guess where the one way split, uh, we've got some nice signs there. And they're going to put this LED, LED sign in, uh, there around Flash Foods North. It's gonna cost a little over fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars Commissioner Pearson. And Durham did not want to vote in favor of those either, but it did pass four to. Also, second reading of public hearing at the GMA, small cell ordinance and the ECG model, uh, electric pole. Attachment ordinance, if you would like to know what those are, I can read them for you, but they're rather lengthy. And, uh, uh, it was a second reading of public hearing for those. They did not, um, did not have any discussion on that. Also, Boys and Girls Club, uh, lease was renewed. Uh, the change, the date of an upcoming meeting, then the next meeting might be scheduled on Memorial Day. I mean, not Memorial Day, Veterans Day. Why get Memorial Day and Veterans Day confused? I don't know, but I do, I say that all the time. But anyway, Veterans Day on the eleventh. So what the commission decided to do was to change the meeting day to the fourteenth. Alright, so November the fourteenth will be, uh, uh, the first meeting. In November, it will be on Thursday. They didn't wanna do it on Tuesday because there's a fire department hazmat meeting that's going on at the same time. Some of the commissioners wanna go to that meeting. So instead of having that, uh, having a city commission meeting on the same night as that, they decided to move it on up till Thursday, which is, is not uncommon for them to move meetings from Monday to Thursday. So the next city commission meeting will be on eleven fourteen. There was another item on the, uh, on the agenda. And that was discuss the Evergreen Avenue, uh, road project. Evergreen Avenue is in very bad shape. Commissioners discussed this, I don't know, a few meetings ago, and the consensus was they're gonna put some money in the next budget to work on Evergreen. They're also gonna talk to the county, see if Oscar Polk, who is the county commission representative for that portion of the city, could get some money from the county to help with this project. And, you know, you don't, you don't build roads in the man, in the span of a couple of weeks. Many times it takes years. In fact, if they're able to do it next year, I'll be very surprised just because of the length of time it takes to get all that done. Uh, the reason I believe that the Evergreen project was on the agenda, this is the last meeting before the election. The election is a week from tomorrow, you can still vote, early voting this week, but the election is a week from tomorrow. And I think this was a, a last ditch effort by Commissioner Pearson to try to let her constituents know that she wants to get this road paid for them or repaid for them. And, and it's gonna take a while. And she made the comment, she was not at the work session. Now, that's something else that's kind of interesting, the work session ended about twelve or fifteen minutes. She wasn't there. Um, she showed up and, I mean, almost, it was uncanny, the timing of when she showed up. So she missed the discussion of Evergreen Avenue. She didn't get to talk about it in the general, at, at the end of the general meeting. But this was discussed and taken care of and I believe resolved a few weeks ago. City's gonna put some money in the budget next, next year, talk with the county commission, see if they can get some money in there, look for some DOT funds as well and get it done. Uh, not really any need to discuss it again, but it was on the agenda. So, the regular meeting, they voted and approved for all this stuff and. Once the business was taken care of, the mayor wanted to adjourn the meeting. It would be about the third meeting in a row that he wanted to adjourn without the mayor and commissioner comments. I have said it many times, I am in favor of anything that cuts out the mayor and commissioner comments, okay? Anything. I think it's a waste of time. I don't think it accomplishes anything, causes more problems than it solves. It's an opportunity for people to air personal agendas and things like that. I think you take care of the business of the, of the city and then you leave and go home. Okay, because you also have department heads and police officers, people who have been at work all day long. And, and the commission, most of the commissioners have jobs that have been working all day long as well, take care of the business and get gone. Mayor tried to get to end the meeting without any commissioner's comments. And Ms. Pearson wanted to ask a couple of questions and her questions stem from the fact that she wasn't at the work session. And what happened, and this is kind of, kind of an interesting fact, Ms. Pearson has been hammering the mayor here lately about not allowing her to talk, about shutting her down. And the reason that the mayor attempted with some degree of success to shut Ms. Pearson down, uh, is because it was only, it was a little over a month ago, it was September twenty-third meeting when Ms. Pearson insisted on discussing a personnel matter in an open meeting. That's why he wanted to shut it down. There was a lot of information, we've talked about some of that stuff, not all of it, but we've talked about a good bit of that since then. And I think most, I've not really had anybody disagree with me on that, that you didn't need to get into that. And I think as we peeled more and more layers back and more and more open records, we saw that that was really a bad idea. So the mayor wasn't shutting Commissioner Pearson down or trying to get her to be quiet because he didn't like what she was saying, because he didn't want her speak. She was speaking about something that really didn't need to be discussed in an open meeting. There was a reason behind it, okay? And a reason that, that I, I thought, I thought was valid. So it wasn't just shutting her down for the sake of shutting her down. And tonight, if you watched and you saw it, the mayor was trying to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Pearson basically got time that other commissioners didn't get. Now, they, you know, they had opportunities during the work session, but she's sort of turned that into her time for comments when there wasn't going to be a time for comments. So I don't think Ms. Pearson could say that the mayor shut her down and prevents her from talking because tonight she spoke quite a bit. And as she was trying to wrap up, she kept saying, one more thing, this is the last thing I wanna talk about. This is the last thing I wanna talk about. And finally, the mayor said, Miss Pearson, I've been pretty patient, this is the third time you said, one more thing. So she wrapped up with her comments and the meeting adjourned. It was about seven thirty. I thought fantastic, I could get to get home at a decent hour, probably gonna get to watch the opening and prom- promote Rawl too. If I can get in and get the TV, I'll also get a chance to watch Jeopardy, or at least the last part of Jeopardy and see if I can get Final Jeopardy right. Cause I don't know how you Jeopardy fans are, I feel like a failure if I don't get Final Jeopardy right. I can have a fantastic round of Jeopardy and get a lot of questions right. But if I don't get Final Jeopardy, I don't feel like I've accomplished anything. So I felt like I could get home in time for Final Jeopardy. And then, pardon my use of the vernacular, all hell broke loose in the meeting room, alright? I was packing up, I was getting ready to leave and go home. And in fact, if I didn't have my microphone, and once again, people were complaining about sound in the meeting room. I've explained that a thousand times, I can't explain it anymore. My batteries on my microphone might, might, might be dead, I might need to change those out. But we do the best we can with the audio. I was packing up the microphone and Ms. Pearson said, oh, cause I mean, and everybody's gone. I mean, the commissioners have left, people leaving the room, people, you know, wrapping up, was a small talk a little bit. Uh, but for the, but it was over with, I mean, the meeting was gone, everybody was, was gone from the table except for her. She was the only, the only commissioner there. She said, oh, there was one more thing, I wanted to talk to the girl at the Enterprise and find out why she wrote that story about me saying that I, uh, that, that I violated the city charter. And I broke the city charter. And, and talking about Kristen Kitchen, she wrote a story, Kristen already left, so the meeting was over with, she took off. So she wasn't there. And, you know, I always have a bit of a mixed emotions when elected officials address the media from the podium, we see it at the national level, it happens some at a local level. The policy that I have is that I don't typically talk back or respond to elected officials in a meeting. If they ask me a direction, uh, a question directly that requires me to answer, I guess I would. But when they're talking to me and saying things about me and they're commenting on things I've written or things I've said, I usually don't say anything. My, my policy is, I'm there working, I'm not a part of the meeting. And we'll talk about the meeting afterwards, but I'm not a part of the meeting, so I don't say anything during the meeting. However, what transpired tonight was not part of the meeting. The meeting was over with. So, she wanted, she said she wanted to know why the, uh, why Kristen wrote that she had violated the city charter, broken the city charter, or Kristen was gone. So she asked Charlie, they, the city manager, said, no, Charlie, did you tell her I, I, I broke the city charter? And Charlie's answer was, she asked me about, you know, a specific scenario of commissioners talking to members of the ad hoc personnel committee if that's a violation of the city charter. And it is. Now, to recap, going back to the September twenty-third meeting. Ms. Pearson said that she spoke to three people on the ad hoc committee. Um, before, or she had talked to three people, okay? She had talked to three people. She hadn't talked to anybody, again, those open records, the, the open records request that we made for, you know, stack of documents, twelve, thirteen pages, showed that. The people who she said she talked to said, she didn't talk to us, okay? She did talk to Loretta Gray the morning after the meeting on the morning of September twenty-fourth, we've talked about that. She called Loretta on, uh, at six fifteen in the morning, uh, to kinda cover her behind, to seem to leave, you know, she said, I kinda mentioned you last night that I talked to you, so I just wanted to make it. It was almost as though she was suggesting that, look, I said I talked to you, if somebody asks you, maybe you could say that we talked. She didn't say that, that's not, that was not in the document, but that's what it sounded like, okay? That's what it sounded like. Again, I'm drawing a conclusion on that. But anyway, she only talked to one person, which was Loretta, and it was on September twenty-fourth. But by speaking with someone on the ad hoc committee, by reaching out to them, that, according to the city manager, was a violation of the city charter. So Ms. Pearson went on about that and, and the, the individual who was recording the meeting, also recording the meeting and, and a lot of people saw me. And then when I turned my phone on and started recording, you, you saw him and he spoke to me a little bit. His name is George Boston Rhines, okay? He operates the Ghetto Free Press and he travels around the state, he covers government meetings, he's got a YouTube channel. I don't know what else he does, but he's a nice guy. And I don't think Mr. Rhines is here for any ulterior motive. Honestly, I would love to sit down and talk with Mr. Rhines. Told him a few times, again, uh, again, I, I'm very, very, very nice and very personable. Uh, he's shown up to some of these meetings and I, I, I wonder, uh, by some of the listening, some of the questions that he's asked, I don't think he has a complete understanding of how things have been done historically in Coffee County, which would shed some light, or in, in the city of Douglas, which would shed some light on what's happening in the meeting room. But at any rate, when Ms. Pearson started talking to the city manager, I was sitting there, I'm thinking, I gotta get this. You know, and I just, I had my tripod up and I just grabbed my phone, I just turned it on, there we go. Ms. Pearson over here, city manager over here. And the mayor saw the direction that Ms. Pearson's questions were going. And I'm, again, drawing a conclusion here, I don't think the mayor wanted the city manager to get involved in that line of questioning. And it was gonna be a lose-lose situation for him and emotions were gonna get high. And I could tell that Mr. Davis was not interested in this particular line of questioning. Also thinking, you can, you can, listen, you can love Charlie or hate him, you can think he needs to have the job or he doesn't. You can think he makes too much money, you can think he doesn't make enough money. However you feel about Mr. Davis, I will tell you one thing that I think that Charlie is going to do the right thing. Now, he's not gonna be perfect, nobody is. Any mistakes that he makes are going to be made honestly and in an attempt to do the right thing. So I tend to believe what Charlie said. By speaking to someone on the ad hoc committee, a commissioner doing that, that was a violation of the city charter. I'm gonna give clarification on it, I've had some discussions since this happened tonight and I think that that is in fact the case. But the city attorney had already left, so, I mean, the thing to do would be to ask Jerome, Jerome, you know, what happened? Is, is, and to my knowledge, nobody in the meeting has done that. Jerome, it was a violation of the charter. And if it's not, I'll be more than happy to say that it's not. But I did a video last week where I said, where I thought it was a violation. And that's when Ms. Pearson turned to me and she said that I said that she, you know, and she asked me, she said, why, why did you say that? You know, again, I don't talk during meetings, but this was not a meeting, this was over with, the meeting was over with. This was just us. And I said, yeah, I said it. I said it because based on the information the city manager gave in response to the question that was asked, he said it was, you know, that it was a violation of the city charter. And, and I have no reason to doubt that. Now, Ms. Pearson says it wasn't a violation because a decision by the ad hoc committee had already been made that by reaching out and talking to members of the committee, she was not breaking anything, because again, she says that she was not influencing a decision, the decision had already been made. But there had been some discussion, if I remember correctly, about trying to reverse that decision. So could you argue that by reaching out to one member of the committee, there might have been an ulterior motive there? You know, again, probably gonna have to take that investigation a whole lot deeper than what, than what is warranted. But, you know, she wasn't just calling to check on Ms. Gray, alright, I mean, that's not why she called. She also made a statement that she spoke to Ms. Gray and she spoke to one other person in the halls of city, in the city hall. Now, that's her saying tonight, she spoke to two people in the, on the, on the committee. September twenty-third, she said she spoke to three people. The documents that we obtained from city hall showed that she only talked to one person. So we've, we've fronted the gamut here from three people to two people to one people, one people, one person. So when you're telling three different stories, at least two of them are false, maybe all three of them. In this case, we know that one, you know, one is true because we've got proof that she spoke to one person. So once again, I had made the statement and I will tell anybody who asks, that yes, there are times when Ms. Pearson has not been truthful on, uh, uh, from, uh, from the commission table. And this is one of those instant instances, she says she spoke to two people, three people, the documents say one person. So, that's not me, I will inevitably get yelled at for this, but I haven't lied to anybody. So, then Ms. Pearson said that I said that any citizen could file a complaint about her breaking the city charter and get her removed from office. And I did not say that. And I told her I didn't say that. What I did say was that in order for any investigation to move forward, that someone would have to file a complaint. And I don't know who that someone is, I don't know if it would be just any citizen in the city of Douglas. Excuse me. If it had to be someone from inside her district. If it could be another commissioner, if it could be an investigative agency. I don't know if there's any criminal wrongdoing in there, I don't know. I don't have any idea. But I did say that if some, in, in order for any action to be taken, that someone would have to file a complaint. Would a commissioner, any commissioner get removed from office over something like this? Probably not. Probably not. It is very difficult and rightfully so to remove an elected official from office. It's bad if an elected official gets removed. It's bad for the government, it's bad for the system, it's bad for the community, it's bad for everybody. If a commissioner or anyone gets removed from office, y- you know, from city commissioner, county commissioner, school board member, up to a state officer and beyond. It is very difficult, it is almost impossible to get an elected official removed from office. Which shows you, if an elected official is removed from office, it is a very, very serious offense. We've had an elected official removed from office here in Coffee County. But it's not something that is taken lightly, okay? Not something that is taken lightly at all. So no, that's not what I said. I'm the type of person that if there's something wrong, I think it should be investigated and then it should be dealt with appropriately, whatever the appro- you know, whatever appropriately is. And I, and, and I, I don't know, in this situation, it would be interesting to see. I think also there's a rather impressive body of work to look at in addition, excuse me, in addition to this one incident. But what you see here are kernels of truth that are sprinkled around a story and around a narrative. And there are a lot of people who are really good at getting right up to that line and knowing where to stop. And we, we say that, we see that a lot, okay? We see that a lot with this particular commissioner, we see it with others, okay? People who know exactly how close to get to the line and then back off, alright? Someone mentioned my shirt, this is my city commission shirt, okay? This is my city commission shirt. It says integrity, error, word not found. And I don't mean that for all of our commissioners, but I do mean that for a few. So it gets kind of a joke, I'll wear, I don't know if everybody gets it or not, but yes, this is made, made by a company called Beverly Kills, which is a pretty neat stuff, I got a couple of their shirts, but they have a, they have a lot of neat things. But I saw this, I got it, I didn't wear it very much, but I wear it every city commission meeting and I wear it some other times as well. Because I think if you don't have integrity, you don't have anything. And nobody's perfect, everybody makes mistakes, everybody does things they shouldn't do from time to time, we all know that. But when you build a career around that, particularly in public service, I have a problem with it. And I'm not talking about anybody in particular here, but I do have a problem with it. And I think that we see that and the more this stuff goes on, the more certain elected officials talk, the more you see these things unravel, the more you see the falsehoods and the misrepresentations of the truth, sometimes outright lies. But at the very least, manipu- manipulating the narrative to suit an agenda. And you, you, you know, you saw that tonight, and I'll believe for a minute that Ms. Pearson forgot to talk to Kristen about that. I mean, Kristen walked by her several times. She was sitting right there. If you'd been thinking about it and wanted to get going on the rant that she did, that's not something that you forget. Anyway, that's just my opinion on the matter. But that's what happened tonight and, and, and it all happened so fast, I didn't have time. I try to give you guys warning that, uh, oh, long lines at the polls. One thing Ms. Pearson said during her comment time, which wasn't supposed to be comment time, was everybody needed to go vote early so they wouldn't have to deal with long lines at the polls. They're not long lines at the polls, there won't be long lines at the polls next Tuesday. There won't be, cause there's not gonna be that many people vote, alright? There's not gonna be that many people vote. You're dealing, you're only gonna deal at the most with a few hundred voters in each ward, because remember wards four, five and six don't have any opposition, alright? With, with, with former Commissioner Anderson dropping out, there's no opposition in Cindy McNeil's ward. Mike Allen and Bob Moore never had any opposition. You do have opposition in wards one, two and three, alright? But you're still dealing with just a few hundred voters there. Citywide mayor's election, there're gonna be some people get out and vote, but it's not gonna be that many. It's not a countywide election, it's not a sheriff's election, it's not a presidential election. There's nothing, there's nothing big out there. Um, so, you know, it's not that, they're not gonna be long lines. Making it out like it's something dramatic, you know? I mean, this is a significant election, this is an important election and this is a very interesting election. But it's not going to be one that will be congested at the polls. And I, I, I'm getting thrown for my facial expressions in the meetings. But, long lines at the polls, there's not gonna be long lines at the poll. Oh, so anyway. That's what happened tonight. Thought we were gonna get out of it without any, without any issues. One of our guests, Vada, during the work session did not show up. So we thought in his absence, we might be able to skirt this thing without any drama, but it didn't happen. But it, you know, it, it did, it did, it did happen after most everybody had left. So, except for who's gonna see it on Mr. Rhines' page and who saw it here. Um, it's, uh, um, you know, there weren't, it's not like it went out on TV and I don't know what Kristen's gonna write about it. Uh, you know, there, there's not a whole lot for her to say she wasn't there. The other thing is, is any elected official who has a problem with any media coverage can call the reporter or the media outlet and talk to them directly and make a statement. I know people have the opinion that I'm, you know, that we would edit or slander, I mean, and that, that's excuse people use, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call Robert Dalton, he's gonna change my statement, I'm not gonna change your statement. If anybody wants to make a statement to us, we will absolutely print it and publish it. If you want to write it and send it to us, we will publish it exactly how you written it. We'll, we won't even take your grammatical mistakes out, cause everybody makes grammatical mistake. But we'll, you know, we'll publish it, but, you know, you don't have to, to make a big production out of it. But some people like to do that. But, you know, Ms. Pearson can call the Enterprise up and talk with them at any time. You know? But I don't think that she wants to do that in a format where someone can ask her questions. Cause if you ask her enough questions and it really wouldn't take that many, you're gonna trip her up because the story changes. But anyway, that's what happened tonight, that was what went on at, at the meeting. And I'm gonna try to make some follow-up calls. I will tell you this and I will give you my word. I am going to make a few more phone calls in the morning. If Ms. Pearson did not violate the city charter by contacting Loretta Gray on September twenty-fourth, I will get on here and say that. And I think that the Enterprise would probably run a correction as well. I mean, that's the only right thing to do. But, last city commission meeting before the, um, before the election, there are only four more commission meetings this year. There will be two in November and two in December. So we'll see what happens at the polls. Everybody go vote, if you're able to go vote, you're, you live in the city, go vote. If you live in Brockston, go vote in your election there. If you live in Nichols, go vote and decide whether y'all can buy beer and wine on Sunday. Go, don't let a handful of people determine the outcome for your community. Everybody go vote, you're in the city, go vote in your wards. You know, of course, everybody can vote for mayor, go vote for the mayor, you've got three candidates, you choose whichever one you want to. Go vote for mayor, vote how you feel with the tax allocation district, one more time, we talked about this last night. You will not find tax allocation district on the ballot, you will find something about redevelopment, it's not a very complicated question, but you'll not a very complicated question, but you'll find something about redevelopment, something like that, you're not gonna find tax allocations. Somebody's asking me who I'm for, Georgia or Florida? Georgia, absolutely. I love alligators, I do not like the Florida gators, and it was difficult. Anyway, I chased that rabbit for a minute. Misty Hampton is putting up a lot of information about, uh, the election, uh, you can vote from eight-thirty to five the rest of the week, in Douglas, the election day hour, seven AM to seven PM at your regular precinct. People in Brockston will vote in Brockston, people in Nichols will vote in Nichols, people in Douglas will vote at Central Square, am I right on that, Misty? Let me know. Alright? So, that's what happened, city commission meeting tonight. It's kinda crazy, kinda wild, but, you know, again, and honestly, I'm not real sure that it projects well for Ms. Pearson going into the election, because I think a lot of this stuff is a reaction, I think, I think she's concerned, she has opposition for the first time, and I, I really think if, if Ms. Gray were on the ballot and not a write-in candidate, I think it would be very difficult for Ms. Pearson to win, I really do. It's gonna be very difficult for Ms. Gray to win, but I think it's possible, okay? I think she's got a very good chance, even as a write-in candidate. Misty says no long lines in advance voting, it's not gonna, it won't be lines in advance voting, it won't be in lines on, on election day either. But I tell you what, I think it's gonna take a long time to count the votes, and I'm already preparing, uh, for a long night, uh, with, uh, Misty and the election board and everybody else down there, so, anyway. Have talked way too long, as I usually do, I apologize. Let me know what you think, if you have any ideas about any of this, let me know. We got a few more things we need to talk about the rest of the week, but we, um, uh, you know, if there's any breaking news, we'll be there and we'll let you know. Once again, I'll say it, and I'll shut up, go vote. If you're able to vote, go, not gonna tell you who to vote for, just ask that you please go vote. Vote your heart, vote your conscious, conscience, vote what you think, the way you think is best for our community. Do that, let the chips fall where they may. Y'all have a good night, thanks for your support, I appreciate it, and we'll see you next time.